So as I said, this is the first in a series. I don't know why I was lucky to be the first one to host a meeting. I guess I look like a guinea pig and sometimes I feel like it. So I'm glad to do that. Any glitches, errors, or unfortunate words that come out of anyone's mouth are all my fault tonight. So we're here because it's really important to get your input. This is going to help our board, the Board of Supervisors prioritize funding for $70 million or so that's available to our county through the American Rescue Plan Act. See, I'm already going off script. ARPA. Tonight, we're all going to hear and learn about what ARPA funding is intended to do and how it will be distributed in Sonoma County. We want to hear your ideas and we'll have the opportunity to share personal experiences to help inform the Board of Supervisors as we set funding priorities for ARPA later this fall. The board plans on making some of these funding decisions before the end of the year, but between now and then, we want to get as much input as we can from individuals, from organizations, from the community, from you. Our community has suffered a lot over the last four years, multiple fires, floods, and now the pandemic. We've become painfully aware through this time that these disasters have not impacted our community members equally. Black, indigenous, people of color, and immigrant and undocumented residents have disproportionately felt the negative impacts of disaster. And in general, these residents have not been as quick to recover from those impacts as the rest of the community. The Board of Supervisors feels strongly that we should use ARPA funds to address some of these disparities. Let's talk about COVID for just a minute because without the pandemic, there would be no ARPA and we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. As of yesterday, 382 Sonoma County residents have lost their lives to COVID-19. Hundreds of thousands more have died across the United States and millions around the world. I want to recognize the pain and suffering that's represented by these numbers, each of which ripples through a family, a circle of friends or colleagues, through the community. The virus has sickened more than 39,000 Sonoma County residents, about 8% of our county's total population. As I've already stated, it did not impact the community equally. Over the course of the pandemic, the Latinx community made up 58% of all the cases, despite being just 27% of the county's overall population. In cases per $100,000 or 100,000 people, if you break it down like that, the highest rates were among BIPOC communities. We can't allow these disparities to continue unchecked or unremedied. Inequity is unjust and addressing it is a moral imperative. Inequity falls heavily on the most vulnerable, but ultimately it harms all of us by exacerbating poverty, damaging health and well-being, and resulting in greater levels of unhappiness across our entire community. I want to see this funding, these investments we make through ARPA, help our community become a place where you can't tell the difference in critical markers of health, well-being, and wealth by race or ethnicity or zip code. Whether we achieve that goal depends in part on each of your voices. We want to hear from those who are most impacted by this pandemic. With that approach, we're working to recognize that the people who are closest to the problems are also closest to the solutions. Tonight is just part of that work. We'll have similar town halls in every supervisor's district. Our Office of Equity and the Human Services Department are working with nonprofit groups to reach into the community to identify gaps and needs. I'm here right now and will be throughout this process to hear individual ideas and community necessities in whatever form you'd like to present them to me. So I look forward to hearing you tonight and in the coming weeks. Thanks for being here again to participate in the process. Now I'm going to reintroduce Alegría de la Cruz, the Director of Sonoma County's Office of Equity, who will lead the next portion of our agenda. Alegría?
Thank you so much Supervisor Corsey for that beautiful grounding and what we are doing tonight. So I wanted to spend some time here just walking through what to expect and what we're able to get done tonight. We want to make sure that folks know what's ARPA and we want to make sure folks understand with us about how ARPA is directed to make sure that we are addressing the impacts of the pandemic on our county's health, on our county's businesses, and our county's community. We will also be walking through a series of breakout sessions so that we can hear and talk to folks in smaller groups. And then we also will make sure that all of those summaries of the breakouts come back so that we continue to have this intentional big community share that wisdom and that knowledge and that space as we close. Next slide, please. Okay. Beloved community, we're here tonight to talk about the way in which the county is going to work to ensure that the promise of this powerful piece of legislation, the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, and the resources that it makes available to serve the hardest hit community members is made real. We are really lucky that the language in ARPA recognizes, as Supervisor Corsey detailed in such beautiful ways, that the pandemic has impacted every human being in our country and in our county, but there has been a much harder hit borne by people of color, by people who are black, indigenous, Latinx, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, and Asian American. And this piece of legislation recognizes that those impacts are because of generational, structural, and institutional racism. So in order to achieve equity and our long-term recovery efforts, as well as to solidify a culturally responsive and flexible disaster response network in preparation for future disasters, we are working together in a multi-departmental and multi-sectoral approach that will center the wisdom and the experiences of members of our community who have borne a disproportionate impact during this pandemic. So we recognize that achieving ARPA's goals requires this strong connected, multi-departmental approach. And we heard this really clearly from our community during the COVID response, that we must design for and serve the whole person. Our bureaucratic silos can hurt folks whose bodies or lives don't fall neatly within our lines. So the language and the focus in ARPA allows us to also accelerate the important work of doing and operationalizing equity in the county and to address the more intense impacts of this pandemic, as well as other disasters, both concurrent and past, on people of color, to develop and imagine outcomes that are different and to implement strategies and services that focus on those communities of color and their well-being in our day-to-day. Next slide, please. So our board is very united in making sure that we have a process that addresses the needs in our community as a whole. So out of the $96 million that was allocated to our county, about $20 million of that has been now allocated to our COVID response. When this legislation was passed, we thought we would be at the tail end of that effort. These variants have made it important for us to continue operating in that emergency response. We're also looking at the ways in which our county departments are going to be working with us and with our community to make sure that we are funding strategic investments in our county's human and physical infrastructure so that we can continue to make sure that we are doing the best work we can for the public that we serve. And then we will be also allocating money directly to community-based organizations. And I'm really excited about that process. So next slide, please. So really want to ground us in the county's working definition of equity. And this definition is something that we borrowed and cobbled together from excellent thinkers nationally. And I want to give credit to Miss Amy Redwood, a powerful black leader, for the idea that achieving equity requires two parts. So embedded in this definition is a recognition that still the single biggest indicator as to how healthy, wealthy, or well somebody is in our country and in our community here in Sonoma County is race. Black, Latinx, indigenous, Pacific Islander, Asian American people continue to experience disproportionately negative outcomes as compared to white people. And this definition also recognizes that the root causes of those outcomes are grounded in past policies and that a path to different outcomes lies therefore in the new process. Next slide, please. So we are excited to present a process solution. And what this offers is an opportunity to accelerate our county's equity work. ARPA creates an opportunity to bring that work right to the forefront now. And what we've done is create an external equity work group. Excited to see some of the members of that work group here tonight, who are made up of people who are living and seeing these structural and institutional inequities. And as a result from those lived experiences, they can help us flip those switches, make those tweaks, elevate those great ideas and the wisdom that come from those lived experiences. So this data collection, this collaborative planning effort will really allow us to more deeply understand what our best areas are for creating new outcomes within those communities most disproportionately impacted. And what this group will do is to build on the lessons and the best practices that came first and foremost from the Latinx Health Work Group, now the Equity Health Work Group. And this new group, the ARPA Equity Community Work Group, draws on those important connections that will come and that only come from the deeper understanding of that disproportionate impact of the pandemic. And that will guide our direction to those efforts and those areas of funding. So we are making sure that we're directing those funds to the members of our community who have shouldered a heavier burden and experienced greater losses during this time. I'm really excited to announce the 15 people who will represent different communities who have been impacted by COVID in this process of the ARPA Equity Work Group. Chelsea Rose, Daniela Bravo, Yvette Minor, Faith Ross, Grace Chong-Schulman, Gregory Fearon, Hector Velazquez, Herman J. Hernandez, John Wielden, Mary Sandberg, Patrick McDonald, Rebecca Sammet, Regina Brennan, Rony Rubinoff, and Sandra Urdido. We are really blessed to have these incredible people joining us in strengthening the public service that Sonoma County has to offer with this effort to spend this money in the best way that we possibly can. Next slide. And we are going to be using this money and developing a process using something called the Results-Based Accountability Approach. So I'm really excited about the ways in which that allows us to, again, deepen what it is that we are doing and to use disaggregated racial data to look at how we are measuring our performance and to develop the new performance metrics to make sure that we better understand whose lives we're trying to change and then recognizing that we really have to start with that disproportionality and the need to focus resources there. So this process will allow us to ensure transparency in reporting. We will have a scorecard. We will be providing technical assistance to our community-based organizational partners. And we're really helping to create and focus on who we're serving and how we're serving them. And again, many, many, many thanks to the folks who really started this work with us and for us in the Latinx Health Work Group. Next slide, please. The timeline here, where we are, we're somewhere over here on the left. We will be working through a community-based organizational survey. We will be working with the ARPA Equity Work Group to develop a series of trainings that we can really much more deeply understand the data that we have and how that data directs us to specific work. And working with our community, we will then present those recommendations to our board in November and then work towards the end of the year to then work towards creating a request of proposals that will go out to our community-based organizational partners in January and continuing to work through all of the wonderful ways in which our county speaks with its partners, RFPs, a Bidders Conference, making sure that we are looking at how we are understanding people's intenting capacity and exciting ideas for how to best use this money with and for us and then releasing funds towards the end of spring. And so. And this is our vision. And this is a vision that we really want to work to share with you. And we believe that this process of centering community voices right in the middle of what it is that we're doing will really allow us to increase the quality of life for the most disproportionately impacted people during this pandemic, but really for our entire community. So thank you so much. I am going to pass it on now to the amazing dream team, Daniela Candela, Oscar Chavez, and Shiba Persson. Thank you.
Thank you, Alegría. And now that we know how ARPA funds will be administered in Sonoma County, I'd like to walk you through the COVID-19 impacts of Sonoma County's health, business, and community. And as we think about how we might prioritize some of the ARPA funding, we want data around our community context to be at the front of our minds. We also always want to remind ourselves that people are behind these numbers. These data can bring up sensitive topics and we want to be sure that people focus on the strengths of all of our communities. Also, often certain groups aren't included in the data reports because they don't represent a statistically significant subgroup. We don't want people to feel forgotten and we recognize we need to do a better job sharing data that is truly representative. And so tonight, where there are data gaps, we are going to depend on each of you to bring stories forward to make sure that everybody is truly representative and that we can have a really good picture of what the needs are in our community. Before we dive into our specific topic areas, I want to talk about community-level data. If you recall that in 2014, our community released the Portrait of Sonoma Report to highlight the disparities that exist in our community that keep many of our residents from accessing the resources that they need to live a long and healthy life. The Human Development Index is used to create a scale to highlight regions with greater opportunity to address some of these disparities. Human Development Index is a combination of data related to health, education, and income. And we are very fortunate that we will be updating this report and the new report will be out in November of 2020. And we will use this information to help guide our funding directions and to point to where we see the greatest opportunity to invest in our community. Next slide. So as an example, this slide shows some of the important social, economic, and environmental influences on health outcomes in these two neighborhoods here in Santa Rosa. And we can clearly see how these influences contribute to the difference of about five years in life expectancy. This really speaks to the generational and structural inequities that were exacerbated by COVID-19. So the opportunity for us is to think about how might we invest these dollars to ensure that we can create shared prosperity and support those that are living furthest away from opportunity. Next slide. So now I'd like to turn it over to the Health Department, the Health Services Equity Program Manager, Daniela Candela, to tell you about the public health response to the pandemic. Daniela?
Thank you, Oscar. Good evening, everybody. A pleasure to be here tonight. And really, we'll be focusing on recognizing the work of the Latinx Health Work Group and that the process that they've been able to support on the Health Department throughout the needs to look at data from a disaggregating data from an equity lens and really intentionally looking at disparity while recognizing that data can harm communities of color if not centered in humanizing the different stories and really equity in data collection of methodology. So I want to start off by mentioning that. And as we look here on our screen, part of the presentation, this first graph, we're able to look at the case rate trends by race and ethnicity all over the course of the time of the pandemic. So we start at the very top with that yellowish-orange line. We see that over the course of the pandemic that our Latinx community has been the most disproportionately impacted. This data is weighted based on population size. Our EpiTeam is able to kind of look at that from a lens of how many folks within each respective communities are part of. Right after, our Pacific and Islander community as well would be after our American Indian Alaska Native as well as our Black and African-American population. These trends are very much in line with what we're seeing nationally and at a state level. So it's needless to say that Sonoma County is not alone with the disparity of what we saw throughout the effects of COVID-19. Next slide. In particular, it was mentioned earlier what we're seeing now with the Delta variant. But needless to say is that in the past 60 days, these graphs are telling us the same story, just in different numbers and trends. Currently, what we are seeing is disproportionate impact right now based on 60 days, our Pacific Islander community green line at the top. And not about a week and a half ago, we were seeing a disparity of American Indian Alaska Native. Thereafter, our Black and African-American community, Latinx, white, Asian, and then what we have a category as multiracial as well. So that is an overview we'll grab for the past 60 days. Next slide. This particular graph, as funky as it looks, it really is the frequency of cases that we were seeing. As we know the impacts of the Delta variant, we've been able to see cases since our last winter search. So the numbers have been fairly similar on what we witnessed and we are seeing another trend around communities of color when we look at our Black African-American population, indigenous speaking communities as well. And we can see that through December of 2020 and then that most recent peak that we were able to witness in August of 2021. We're seeing a decline now, most recently. And I want to just kind of preface, there is around 737 tests per every 100,000 per day that are being done. And the testing rates have increased particularly more around our Black and African-American community as of July 1st and have remained pretty high until recently. Next slide. This looks at an overall disproportionality kind of table that we broke down per populations. As we look at the far right side, our Latinx population that, as Oscar had mentioned earlier, makes up for 27.3% of our population, while also seeing 41.8% of total hospitalizations. And thereafter, again, looking at the disproportionality between the percentages that they make of our overall community here in Sonoma County, we look at the same trends going forward. And although that is a huge disparity on its own as we look at Black and African-American population, they make 1.3%. But those 1.3% is so important to know that the hospitalization rates remain high at 2.4%. So something to keep in mind. Again, people of color have been overrepresented in COVID-19, really in hospitalizations and deaths in summary. Next slide. This is where we're at in vaccinations. I think where we have seen the most disparity, not even on the effects of COVID, it's also been some delays on vaccines and how that really... Although we make progress, we're still able to see some disproportionality as we see our Latinx population and our multiracial groups kind of lagging behind in some of them when it comes to vaccine rates. And just really quickly, fully vaccinated. It's on our blue section here for, and we're right now at 65.2% for Latinx population. Whites are 72.6%, Asians, 76% are Black and African-American populations at 79.1%. And proceeding thereafter, multiracial group, that is probably the one that we're seeing the most behind in terms of rates at 36.8%. Next slide. This is a map of really where we are in our Super Sorial District. I think it's really important to center the effects that... What we look, what we in particular help look at the Healthy Places Index, which is a tool that focuses on socioeconomic factors and community conditions across the state and looks at education, housing, transportation, and much more. And the interesting trend that we're able to see geographically, it's the focus that we see along what we call HPI-1 or the Healthy Places Index, since it's one. And where that lies, so that would be majority of Roseland, right? So like smaller in the area, but the Roseland area being heavily impacted, regardless of the size of where it like sits on the map. So something to keep in mind in there, we have so far in that quartile, we have 1,944. And then you can see at the far right corner there, I know those numbers are a little bit hard to see, all the way to HPI-4, which is 1,236. I'll end there in terms of numbers and I'm always happy to answer questions and happy to just get some of these slides out for further review for the community to look at.
I'm sorry, a quick question. Does anybody see any... Is anybody concerned about the disparity between the number of people who have been vaccinated by racial group and what the infection rate is? Those don't seem to correspond to each other very well. Or am I missing something?
Are you looking at the slide on vaccines rates and what it... What, I say, how it correlates to testing?
Well, I was just talking about the entire story. I mean, it's looking at all the slides and all the different communities, the impacts on those communities. And I expected the vaccination rates to kind of correspond to the infection rates. And it doesn't seem like they do. So I'm a little confused.
Yeah. Make... I think we're going to be holding questions towards the end, but I'm more than happy to just give a little piece to that. It really is, I think, when we look at critical markers of health and the social determinants of health and the very many reasons that contribute to the barriers of why communities who have been more disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, there's so many layers in there. I'm happy to answer a little bit later, but that is part really of the answer. Yeah.
Dan, thank you for that question. And we'll have an opportunity during the breakouts to answer or go into that or raise that as an issue. But Daniela, thank you so much for giving us a better understanding of what the public health response... She's the Executive Director of Economic Development Board and she's going to tell us about how our businesses, how our business community is faring during the pandemic. Shiba?
Thank you so much, Oscar. Thank you, everyone, for taking time to be here. I will not labor on this topic very long, but this is a snapshot. So early on, Economic Development Board contracted with Dr. Rob Eiler from Sonoma State University. And we also contracted with Dr. Marlene Orozco out of Stanford to really help us understand what the economic impacts are, whether the projected recovery, what does that look like? And how do we break that down by occupation as well as by industry? So this very first slide here is really showing us the impacts by industry. This is looking at from, you know, pre-pandemic, so December of 2019 through June of 2021, which is the latest available data. There is no surprises here. The biggest industry impacted is leisure hospitality. That is down by over 19%. Other services, you see there, education. I know we continue to hear about challenges around education. Other services you see there, education. I know we continue to hear about challenges around education. That includes of course childcare, you know, teacher shortages, all these different things. Government is right there at 5.2% as well as retail because early on, we certainly understood the need for shelter in place orders. You know, that limited our ability to do certain types of activities. And so this correlates with all of those different measures that we were all taking to continue to keep us all safe. Next slide, please. So this next slide, again, I don't think there's any surprises here. Here's what the data is showing us with respect to occupations. So the people who do all the work within those other industries that we just looked at. Certainly the biggest impact is food preparation and related services. That's, you know, decreased by over 20%. You see the numbers here for sales and other related activities. Media, you know, that's art, design, entertainment, sports, media. We know that entertainment, we've continued to have challenges around that. Movie theaters, everyone who works in all those different types of occupations have been impacted. As well as personal care services. So that's, you know, things like barbers and salons and fitness centers and others. So that has been severely impacted by over 20%. Next slide, please. So when we think about the most vulnerable, this is, you know, how do we think about recovery? If we are thinking about how we might see this play out over time, how long is it going to take for us to recover? That is a question that we get very often at the Economic Development Board. And recovery really is defined as if you were to rewind the clock back to before the pandemic. So if you go back to December of 2019, how long is it going to take to get back to at least that level? So here are what we are projected that are going to be the most vulnerable occupations through full recovery into 2024. Production, personal care services, they're at 1.4%. Excuse me, I'm looking at a different slide. I apologize. Accommodation and food services. You know, over 9% difference, educational services. Arts, entertainment and recreation, we projected a little bit of growth there and administrative and waste management. So again, we do get that question a lot, you know, what does full recovery look like? How long is that going to take? When are we going to be over this thing called COVID? This is just a snapshot on some of the data that we've been able to pull into our department. Next slide, please. So all the other presenters have talked about the disproportionate impacts. We know that the impacts of COVID-19 have not been equally distributed and have really impacted some segments of the community and some people more than others. This is actually a snapshot. This represents really early on in COVID. So starting in February of 2020 through June of 2020 by African American, Latinx and Asian American. And this is actually the total businesses by race, ethnicity, you know, again, BIPOC owned businesses in the country. And you see where the numbers were in the blue that was February and that sharp decline. And so again, this is just a snapshot to show us early on. You know, it was huge impacts to our BIPOC owned businesses. It was immediate and drastic. And I will also note that these numbers are not back to those blue numbers. Yeah, we talked about, you know, what was it like pre pandemic? So, you know, our BIPOC businesses are starting to make strides, starting to add more jobs back. Some of them have, you know, resumed their operations, but they still have not gotten back to those pre pandemic numbers either. And there are risks continuing and barriers to, to being able to get back to those pre pandemic numbers. And so certainly we know that access to capital is a huge issue. There's a tremendous amount of data that shows that BIPOC businesses usually can't access that, that capital as easily or as readily as other types of businesses as well as issues around labor and supply chain. So with that, I will, you know, end there, but certainly at the Economic Development Board, we have full reports available. So if anyone is interested, we also have that information on our website and happy to take any questions later on at the, that time in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Shiba. And just as a reminder, we'll be, we'll be publishing these slides on the ARPA website and we'll give you that address at the end of the presentation. So before we get to the, the presentation, I want to share just a couple of more data points. Next slide, please. So thank you again, Shiba. This is data from our department, the Human Services Department, where we saw a significant jump in the number of CalFresh applications during the first shelter in place compared to the same, same month in the prior year. So as people were asked to stay home, they didn't have access to employment and as a result, they needed access to additional supports. And we saw that our CalFresh has significantly, significantly gone up. Next slide. Looking at data from 211, we also saw that we saw significant call volume increase in, in, in ask for supports around housing, access to healthcare, income supports, assistance, food and utility assistance. These are, these areas, the area with the biggest increase in calls compared to the pre pandemic was for supports for income assistance. Again, because people were being asked us to stay home, many of them didn't have, you know, vacation time that they could take or paid sick leave at the time. And so that was the, the need in those early days of the pandemic. Next slide. We also want to highlight some of the current challenges with access to childcare. Parts of Santa Rosa, Sonoma Valley and West County, along with small areas of Windsor, Petaluma and Runner Park have inadequate access to childcare. And the majority of Santa Rosa, including Roseland, Santa Rosa, South Santa Rosa and Coffee Park are what we called childcare deserts here in, in Sonoma. And in Feder Springs and Agua Caliente, we, we also see that there are, there are child deserts there as well. And just to let you guys know, a child desert, these are areas where childcare demands exceed the space available and state licensed childcare. And looking at this data, you saw that we had a significant decrease in the number of in-home childcare providers. Next slide. And so with the lack of access to childcare, we know that there's a direct impact on school readiness. Of the white students that participate in the, in Ready, which is these are assessments that are conducted for incoming kindergarten students. 51% were ready to go compared to 26% of Latinx students. And as you can see from this slide, this is the annual comparison of these data points. And the to is to think if education. Next slide. Now we're going to highlight how our students and school staff and parents and guardians are doing. This is the Youth Truth Survey taken by over 18,000 students. About 9,000 parents and guardians and around 2,000 school staff. And this just happened in December or December and January of the 2021 school year. As you can see, 50% of middle, middle schoolers are 71% and 71% of high schoolers reported feeling depressed, stressed or anxious, making it hard to, for them to do well in school. Students who identify their sexual orientation as anything other than straight have disproportionate rates of depression, stress and anxiety. And feeling depressed, stressed and anxious by students self-reported sexual orientation and feelings of depression, anxiety and stress impact Sonoma County students at a higher rate than, than the California and the national average. So these are markers that we really need to pay attention to. Next slide. This, this, this here represents the fact that a lot of our students did not have access to, to, to broadband or the internet. And here you can also see disproportionality between our English language learner community and the regular population. So this is an area that has continued to create a bigger divide in helping to close the academic achievement gap. Next slide. So this slide represents the number of ways in which ARPA funds can be utilized. And these are, these are buckets that have been predefined by the federal government. And so tonight, we're going to focus on gathering your input on how we might prioritize the topic areas related to the ARPA funding guidelines that now appear on this screen. And so before we move into the breakout sessions, we want to get your, your input on which of these we should prioritize based on the kinds of things you're seeing in your community or the kinds of things that you're reading about. So ARPA is very clear that we can provide assistance to help unemployed workers. We can provide assistance to households, aid to impacted industry, assistance to small businesses and nonprofits, investments in neighborhoods and housing developments and activities that address educational disparities like broadband or some of the mental health impacts and activities that promote healthy childhood environments. So as you think about these, these buckets, I'm going to ask that we pull up the poll and ask that you vote for your top three based on the data that we presented. And then we'll go on to talk about the breakout sessions. And just a reminder that, that they start off in Spanish, but then they go into English.
Let's go ahead through that process. Thank you again. We value each and every one of you and all the input that you were able to give tonight. And let's take a moment with our first facilitator, Ethan. Do you want to start us off with one or two highlights?
Absolutely. First highlight was, well, this is not a highlight, but this is a takeaway, I guess you could say. Was helping children through educational challenges was extraordinarily difficult and fed into larger mental wellness issues among both children and adults. And then the other takeaway was specifically, it's related, but it's around childcare. We need providers and spaces and help with regulations. We need subsidized slots that are numerous enough to, to cater to the needs of, of the workers who have to be at work, don't have the luxury of teleworking. And the profession needs to pay enough to be attractive to newcomers.
Great, thank you. Who's our next facilitator that wants to jump in with a, a short one or two highlights from your, your room?
I'll pop in Kelly. I want to say that we had a lot of thoughtful responses in our, in our breakout room. A few of the common things were that isolation was a great concern to many people in our room. As experience of COVID and an ongoing experience and also the application of lessons learned from the successes of nonprofits during the COVID response. Many people in the room thought that that would be very helpful to these funding decisions.
Great, thank you, Allison. Who wants to? Who wants to step in next?
I'll go. This is Helen. So we had a lot of conversations that circled back to the multiple disasters that our community has experienced. So from fires to pandemics and, you know, floods and everything in between. And so it just really reiterated the mental health crisis that our, our children, our students are experiencing and the members in, in our session really witnessed firsthand how that is definitely impacting students then and now as well. And we did talk about some of the resources that they found helpful, but also that we really do need to continue to put our focus on supporting that issue. And ending on a good note, we talked about what other county supports could provide. And really there is just this idea that building resiliency at the end of the day is building, it's building relationships, getting to know each other, taking care of each other. So this idea around getting back into knowing our neighbors, knowing our community, having block parties. I mean, it's really going to take, build this community. So if we should ever encounter another hardship, we'll be there for each other and really can support each other through that resiliency.
Thank you, Helen. And who wants to jump in next?
I can jump in. Helen just set me up. This is Joni. My group talked a lot about to, a lot too about really the need to, to build community systems. And really even talked about how there are some examples of communities that are being built in South Park. Some successes that they're having there, but really the need for people to know their neighbors and to be able to build and grow those relationships so that we're taking care of each other. That came up a lot. We also had some great, great thoughts on really needing to look carefully at our population of people with special needs that are often just not seen in the data and are not called out. As well as needing to look at, look really closely at our preschool age children that have at this point endured four solid years of trauma and are going into kindergarten beyond carrying four years of trauma with them and how are we caring for them? And then that really, the other big piece that came up was really the need for mental health support for our whole community, but really with a focus on youth and on our Spanish speaking population. So those were some big things that came up from our group.
Thank you, Joni. Who wants to jump in next?
I can jump in.
Oh, sorry, Jake.
Go ahead, Kristen.
All right. I'll take it. I'll take it. Thank you, Jake. So I was with group number one and we had some great answers. A lot of concern about the homeless population, housing affordability, housing access and housing availability and numbers. A lot of mental health concerns for those suffering from addiction for homeless. We also had some feedback on that the county should consider long-term impacts beyond the one-time monies and really think to allocate the monies to programs that have proven that they're sustainable and can continue past the lifetime of this money. Look at barriers for access to services. So people may be unable to access services due to technology or transportation, language or work schedules. A lot of concern around isolation as well. Affordable housing and shelters, rental assistance, down payment assistance for homes. More recruitment and retention for those working in social services and nonprofits because they've seen tons of work, their work has grown during this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Jake, want to jump in?
Yeah. So our group talked about pretty much everything that's been mentioned without, without the disasters, but there, there was a focus on the impact of the pandemic on seniors and what people went through, seeing their parents deal with this and having access to service and what they saw. That one thing that was really helpful was access to meal deliveries during that time. We talked about kind of mute. The impact to families and children on having to be home and, and how that impacted not only parents' mental health, but children's mental health. We talked about how schools are going to need support with mental health for not just students, but staff in transitioning back. And we talked about how it's important to keep roofs overheads and meals on tables. And to keep people who are employed, give, give organizations the ability to continue employing them.
Thank you, Jake. And I think we have one more allegria. Do you want to jump in?
Thank you. I had the privilege of being in the Spanish room, Spanish language speaking room. And I just wanted to share like what it feels like to be in this big group of, of a room and not be able to understand in your own language the conversation that's happening. It was really difficult to hear the combination of deep suffering that has happened in the Latinx and indigenous language speaking communities through this pandemic. I'm emotional. I cry when I'm angry. And listening to the deep injustices that this community continues to face. Even now, as many of us feel like we're coming out of the pandemic really struck all of us who sat in that room tonight. Some things that missed from our presentation was talking specifically about farm workers. And the combination of what it means to work outside in an industry that has historically been extractive and harmful to many workers and their health. Especially during polycrisis time. Powerful words. Golpe tras golpe tras golpe tras golpe. I want to just repeat that in English. Hit after hit after hit after hit. And we heard of wage theft that is happening this month, right now, to people who can least afford to have their, their wages stolen from them. to have their, their wages stolen from them after working hard. We heard about the importance of language justice, not just language access. And we heard about how important it is for us as service providers to humanize the people that we serve in the way that we ask them questions about themselves and their lives that help them to understand why we need this kind of information from them. And I just want to thank the people who are in our room for sharing so honestly and so vulnerably with us tonight. And in the spirit of equity, um, I hope that in future meetings that we have, that we prioritize the Spanish speaking group first and that we might do a little flip around so that those folks can speak for themselves in their own language. And I'm looking forward to figuring out how we do that practically, logistically in, um, in this community as we move forward into a just recovery together. Thank you.
Did everybody get a chance to, to go?
Um, I haven't reported on my group. So we.
Okay, go ahead, Sabe.
Um, talked about basically everything everyone has mentioned. Um, there was always an insistence on trying to look at the bigger picture. I think this is, it was a common theme I threw out. Um, they wanted to see, um, more data on, um, the actual impacts, uh, that COVID has had on different communities. For example, how many people go to bed hungry at night? How many people had shelter deficit and medical attention? Um, and, uh, not only knowing what dollars were already available, uh, but also, uh, they wanted it to be, it would be nice to have, uh, to know who could access them. So we could identify the gaps. And we discussed a lot of, uh, ways we can address some of the gaps. And one of the things that came up too was this issue of broadband access. And a period of time we're on Zoom all day long. Um, and yeah, that's a reporter.
Thank you so much, Sabe. And I know we're running close on time. I want to make sure that we captured all of the groups.
Yeah, I can go, Oscar.
Okay, Nora.
Um, now I'm emotional, uh, but it is heartbreaking to hear all these stories. Okay, so the main, um, takeaways from my group were around cash assistance and cash aid. Um, and, and, um, uh, essential worker pay. And we also, there was also discussion around, um, the impact on youth, on kiddos and, and also the teachers and any, any human that's in an industry where they don't have the luxury of working from home. Um, so really essential worker pay, um, and, and youth and, and teacher impacts, um, was a big conversation topic. And also the, um, neighborhood, community building and the connections between the city and the county. And, um, disaster response was also talked about. So I'm sensing a theme there, which is nice to hear. We're building a community right now. So thank you, everyone, for sharing. It's, it's been very, um, inspiring and I value all your input.
And we still have one more facilitator. So Holly, um, I think Holly still has to jump in.
Say that tonight, we've heard, um, a lot of different topics of concern to the community. But in our group, one thing that was discussed, it seems a little bit novel, is talking about the impact on businesses. In particular, the hospital staff and how burnt out they are, how difficult it is to fill positions for many of our different types of businesses. But again, at the hospital level for sure, how the lack of childcare facilities and the closure of those facilities has made it even harder for people to coordinate work schedules and how the housing is so unaffordable. And the lack of availability of housing makes it, again, very difficult to draw workers to our area or to keep them here. So the business community has been hit very hard and has continued, um, to feel some of the impacts of the pandemic. Thank you.
Okay, now Oscar, I think we are officially, I think we did go through all the groups now. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Kelly. And, uh, first of all, I want to thank Supervisor Corsi for hosting us tonight. And equally important for all of our community members to, to join us. I know that it is difficult to, um, take two hours of your day to be here, but your feedback and your input is so critically important to us. And thank you for your candor. You know, this pandemic, um, this crisis, I think presents a, a unique opportunity in that we will have, um, you know, a, a down payment uh, to address some of the inequities that have created so much disproportionality in our community. And so your feedback is very important. Uh, we want you to stay connected with us. This is not the only opportunity that you will have to give us feedback. You can do it by going to the ARPA website. You can join some additional presentations that we will have. And we're also open to feedback. Uh, already we recognize that, you know, our, our breakout rooms could have been a little larger. Uh, there was additional data that we need to include. Um, so this feedback is important because at the end of the day, we want to get the narrative right about the challenges in our community and about where, uh, we should be investing in our community. Uh, we are all in this together. And I know that when we bring the best of our thinking, uh, to the table, uh, those least among us, uh, will be better off. And that is our commitment to the, to this community and, and to ensure that we can make the best use of these dollars. So with your help, uh, as a community, uh, we will hopefully get it right and come up with some priority areas that we know will have a lasting and significant impact, uh, in our community. So I want to thank you, uh, for joining us here today. And I want to offer Supervisor Corsi the opportunity if he wants to make any closing comments.
Thanks, Oscar. And I just really want to thank everybody for being here, for taking part in this first meeting, which, you know, is important for, for the information that's been communicated, but also for, um, you know, learning what the shortcomings of this format might be, how we can fix those and how we can make each and every one of these meetings a little better each time. So I really appreciate that. I just, you know, I just wanted to say that, um, well, first of all, people that I hold closest in my life are in healthcare, in middle healthcare and public school teachers. And I wish that they could have taken my place tonight because they, you know, that, what we're looking for here is the experience of people in the community that are most affected by this. I am a, a person of privilege and I have been almost embarrassingly, uh, protected and, and exempt from hardship for the past year and a half. Not everyone I know has. And I, and I know that many in this community have been much harder hit than the people I just talked about who are in my close circle. So I appreciate that the, the way that people have, have shared their reality, shared their anger, their sadness. And there's good reason for those emotions. But let's also have some, some hope and determination that, um, together we can make things better. And, uh, I, I'm an optimistic person. I'm going to hold on to those, but also I'm going to remember the, the anger and sadness I heard here tonight. So once again, thank you to everyone for, for being part of this.
Great, thank you Supervisor. And, uh, it is, uh, eight o'clock. Uh, so again, thank you so much. Stay tuned, follow us on the website and we will keep you posted on our progress as we get to, um, developing these priority areas. So thank you and have a good evening.